Um, I'm gonna call. Okay, call the meeting to order at five thirty six P M. Roll call is Council McBride. Council of Pacino and myself Chair Parker along with Town Manager Mister John Bird. Um, can I get an approval of the May twenty ninth minutes? Or a motion to approve please?
I motion to approve the May twenty ninth minutes.
Nick Pride will second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so. Can go on to the next thing. Okay, we're gonna take these one at a time, so. This meeting's probably gonna be a little bit longer cuz we have a five agenda items to go over. So our first one is. I phone down. My first one is two thousand twenty four dash six 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 which is the rules violations review. Which is on page two of our packet. So this was a referral made. By Council Guyaski about but possible rules violations. I am going to. Not discuss. July, I mean June, January first two thousand sixteen cuz. That is too far back within our timeframe and I. Do not wish to discuss that one.
Chair Parker, do you mean the January sixteenth, the first one?
Yeah, I think June sixteenth, I I do mean January's very first.
I just wanna make sure I'm understanding.
Yes, yeah, cuz I don't think it, yes, so that one we are not going to discuss. Even though that was an issue, we should have taken it up at an earlier date.
That's fair. So so six, six, seven, we're just, we're gonna skip over?
Six, six, six. My thought.
Oh, there's six, 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 I have.
Just six, 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 uh, not the whole entire thing. I don't know yet. I I want your opinions before we. Say we're not discussing the rules violation review.
Well, may.
No, go ahead.
It seems to me, uh, everything in six, six, six. Is just. There's a lot in six, 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 but it also, it it's summing up everything for the or six, six, seven, six, six, eight. And uh. And six, six, nine. So you you can't just discard it in it it in its entirety.
No, I just wanted to not talk about January sixteenth.
Okay. We could skip that particular one, I mean. The the other two videos. Um, still tell the story.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with whatever you decide, Chair Parker. I do wanna let you, I did, I did do my research on this and. The January sixteenth one, uh, I had a difficult time hearing, um. The the discussion of a counselor where. She was being called to order, so I was gonna have a difficult time on this one anyway because. Although there were, there were moments where uh, the mayor would, I I forget exactly called to order, but it was, I couldn't hear the comments that were, that were. That were alluding to the, you don't have the floor and so forth. So that was gonna be a difficult one for me anyway, just because. I I couldn't hear the, I couldn't hear the tape recording, uh, but I'm comfortable with, you know. Moving forward if that's what the this committee wants to do.
Yes, I I'm just figured we're not gonna discuss the very first item, which is January sixteen two thousand twenty four. The other two items. Which has. Led to some other decorum issues within the debate and everything. I do wanna discuss. Whether that we put a violation on it. That's up for discussion. Um, so. May seventh meeting, the Cal meeting, um. There were a couple of issues regarding point of orders and citing decorum, um. That was a night where it was going back and forth, so. My opinion. And this is only my opinion. The mayor had the floor. As she was discussing an item. And there was a point of order called on her. Regarding decorum. But as the Chair of the Committee of the Whole. She has a right to discuss what we've done or what has come up. Cuz she is the chairperson of the Committee of the Whole, so she is authorized in my head, is authorized to present. The same thing for me as the Chair of the Rules Committee, I present to the Council or present to the public. And I do not believe that there was a decorum issue, that's one. And two, the other half was going back and forth to the other person being declared. Out of order. And then we ended up having go to a recess, um. The request is to see if the council violated any rules when speaking. About ex-official member. And Bois specifically to Council Rule fourteen, so. In Council Rule fourteen, just to let the public know. Ex-official member and Bois is the RTM moderator and he does. Have the authority to speak at our meetings. He does not have the right to vote or make any motions. But he can come, he is equal to a counselor. My question would be for you guys is, was there a violation? Committed.
By the RTM moderator?
By. Counselor. Bordelon if she violated and rules when she was speaking about. And Bois, Mister and Bois.
Yeah, I'm I'm gonna take a jump in here. I'm gonna back up. I I do think Counselor Bordelon. Had maybe a small point that she was making, you know, I can't speak for her, but I think she took offense. To what appeared. The mayor was summarizing some things that I think, I'll read my notes here, um. Because I think how some board on took offense to her because she thought the mayor was speaking in generalities for all counselors. So I can understand Counselor's point, Council Board on's point on, um. That I think she was trying to make a lot positive, but that it wasn't, that it wasn't summarizing necessarily that counselors weren't doing their work. I think that's where it got heated to begin with and that. She thought Counselor Franco was discussing, I mean Mayor Franco, Mayor Franco was discussing. Um, bringing solutions and I think Counselor Bordelon took it as an implication that. She or others weren't doing their work, so I I understood that part of the video, the meeting, um, but I do think there was. Um, I don't know what what you wanna call it, but a decorum issue. Because when Mayor Ma- Mayor Franco tried to uh, slow that process down or or stop the banter, let's say. I do think Counselor Bordelon continued to uh, try to get the floor and try to talk over her, so I think there was an issue there. Um, but I can understand why she was frustrated, but I do think there was. Somewhat of an of an out of order, um, beyond what would be a reasonable level of, uh. You know, banter, I guess.
Okay, alright, I'm.
When I saw during uh, the timestamp. The timestamp is from one seventeen fifty to one twenty forty. That point, there, there wasn't any discussion a- a- about the RTM moderator. Um, this discussion, um. Was with um, with the mayor when she suggested that the council is blink bring, um. Solutions with their. Problems that they that they'd come up with. And and that's when. Counselor Borderline, that's what I believe Counsel Borderline took offense to and that's. That just started a whole blow up right there. The the back and forth and the out of orders and then it it was became a decorum thing at that point. But um, as far as the. RTM moderator, I that's, I don't think that's in.
No, I think it's the second half. You're right, but I don't why that's under that part, so.
Yeah, I think that was referring to the next item.
Okay, so.
Are you saying I jumped one?
No, 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 I jumped one. I didn't realize written, I would have done it, but never mind, um.
Not a problem.
I'm also gonna throw, again, throw my two cents in, um. The mayor. Asked people cuz there was a item that was brought up by two different counselors, same item. The mayor was speaking to all to find a solution. It wasn't targeted to one's person cuz that person's name was not called out. She did say all counselors come up with a solution. That was my take on it and that means do your homework. Sit back and say, okay, if you don't understand something or don't know what to come up with, then that's fine too. But it wasn't targeted to one person because if you went back and looked, someone else mentioned the same uh, item. Which I'm not gonna do on this point because it's not part of our. Discussion. My problem with the whole thing was. Decorum was, there was a lot of back and forth. And there was a big violation on that part. My question for you guys, as we're looking through this. Are we gonna come up with a solution to say, hey, this person did do a violation, we had a discussion and. We are gonna mention it and saying that they did something. Or are we gonna just discuss it and say that these are too far back to have a discussion and we just wanna move forward? That's my question for you guys.
I I believe maybe the um, the January sixteenth is probably too far back. But um, I also believe that with the January sixteenth. Still on people's minds, um, uh, the. The May seventh and the May twenty eighth were, um. Pylons, I guess, I I don't know the the right terminology to use on that, but they were just. Added to it, even though we're not gonna discuss the sixteenth. Uh, the other two are definitely, uh, discussable.
Okay.
My my opinion is the May seven is what we're just, we're discussing now, uh, should be brought up and mentioned, but I think it would be. Proper to bring up, at least in my opinion, what the reasoning was that caused the individual to, um. Become upset, let's say. Because I think, and I have not spoken to anyone about this as my own hearsay, but I think the reason. Uh, Council Board on was upset was because for opinion and and you're right, uh, Chair Parker, I'm not saying. Mayor Franco did anything wrong. I think it was perceived as a slight and I think that that may have irritated the individual. And that caused what would be construed as excessive, you know, um, decorum violations, but I do think. It's just, it it's referred to us, we reviewed it, in my opinion, it should just be stated, but not to be made a. A major deal other than if we're, this group is gonna refer them, we're gonna review them and act upon, not act upon them, but provide. Our understanding of the situation, which I think in my opinion, decorum was not followed in the on the May seventh meeting after that. Uh, Counselor was was a little upset. The other thought, I don't know if you wanna consider this, Chair, if you wanna. Review the other parts of the meeting agendas because we may be discussing. How and where and what to do in these situations in the future.
Oh, yes, that's the next few things.
Because that will kinda embed into what we're gonna decide to do with these two matters, I would think too.
So you wanna post, you wanna um, suspend the rules and move this to the end and then make a decision at the end?
If you think that's proper, just cuz. I don't know how this this committee's gonna vote on these other matters in terms of how to, how to treat these situations.
And that makes sense, oh, I need.
I look at six, six, six as as, um. Just, I honestly just look at six, six, six as a, um.
Discussing point.
Background for the rest of them. I I don't think there's six, six, six needs to have a rule or or a motion or. Or anything on it, as a matter of fact, it's, but it is. Uh, it's just background for the six, six, seven, six, six, eight and 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 the rest of the.
That's a great point.
So.
Discussion purposes only.
Yeah, I think so. I I think that, I think it's a very good. Again, background story, so we understand what we're talking about in six, six, and and the rest of it. And if the three of us have done our homework and and rewatched the uh, uh, the videos. Then we know what to, we know what to do.
Okay, so then going on to the next. Item which is five twenty eight and where the Council Board on asked, it was, is offended by an ex-official members comments during the meeting and one. The comments removed from the minutes. One, we can't remove them from the minutes because it's part of the packet and two, um. The second half of that statement is about the port of order shouldn't have been called because. Um, person was speaking on behalf of what. Mister Ambrois message was and we're not supposed to interpret. Or give an opinion on someone else's statements. Which is basically everything we're doing tonight, though, um. Your thoughts?
I'm I'm gonna comment on what I commented about at the council meeting. I don't think it's proper for us to approve minutes. That has an attachment. That's not included in the minutes. I don't know what, how that can be legally proper and and as an example. I had no idea about uh, Ambra's um, attachment in this specific situation because when I review the minutes before meeting. I review the minutes and the minutes never reflected. Count, um, RTM Moderator, but I also had an attachment that he submitted. So whether or not we make any decisions tonight, I I just think we should. Encourage uh, Tom Andrew Burr and others that if there are gonna be attachments, it should be reflected. In the minutes because without it being the minutes, I would never know to look for that.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna out there. Those were sent to us to be included for the minutes and there was an email, so you may have missed the email.
No, I I understand that perfectly clear and I'm sure I did, I'm sure I saw the email. My concern is that. Excuse me, our body, the council approves minutes.
Council McBride.
Say there's an attachment included or don't mention anything that is attached.
Council McBride, let me finish.
Okay.
Others that have submitted stuff to us and we didn't get it. And we didn't include it in the minutes until after the fact. First. Yes.
They're not officially part of the minutes, they're received and put on our website with the minutes, they're not officially part of the minutes.
So.
All communications get put on our website.
So you, uh, Council McBride, so you want the minutes to be part of our packet even though they're. Not accepted, he made the comments, he basically read the comments into effect into our meeting. But he had written. Comments attached, but he read.
Seems, it's, it seems, it probably gone off topic, but it seems like a disconnect because. They are part of the record, right? They are part of the record, they are part of the meeting, but then when we review the minutes, the minutes don't say. That that those were attached or there was something submitted, that's all. And again, we, it it it's probably not worthy of this discussion tonight, so move on, but I just think it'd be nice to. Have that information, like in my past, the minutes would say. Uh, RTM Moderator Bras provided documentation that's on the website. Or anyone for that matter, if they're submitting information from the record, it should, I would think it'd be part of the minutes.
So. Mister Burt. How should we handle this from now on? Your thoughts?
Right now, you know, right now, every communication anybody submits emails, et cetera, just get put on, you know, somebody shows up public comment and gives a. A handout, it just always, you know, it just gets filed basically, it's not part of the minutes. Sometimes they hand us stuff that aren't even part of the meeting, you know, we'll get emails about a topic or whatever else. You know, they aren't read at the meeting or anything, they're just concerning the meeting. So I wouldn't suggest, you know, we've had meetings where we've had thirty or more attachments, they're not attachments to the minutes, they're just things we've received, we just want people. You know, to have access to them, but they're not part of the minutes at all.
Well, okay, no, I I see your point, Tom Andrew Burr, maybe, maybe just the disclaimer at the end of the minutes, this, you know, there's also additional information that. Should be reviewed and cuz cuz there is, there. If I guess, if I was a new person in town of Groton, I came to Groton and I wanted to know everything that's happening, I I would go to the minutes, right? And if the minutes then said there's additional documentation on the website, that would get me more up to speed, that's all. So I I'll move on, I don't wanna.
I'll make that note, so, hey.
Alright, we're gonna go back. Top it I can, ta- back on the topic at hand, so. She was speaking on behalf of what his opinions were. Which violates council rules. My question to you. Did as a group. Was there a violation?
I didn't see one.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't think I saw one either, I mean, I saw her. Her her opinion and her thoughts. Uh, but but I I don't know if it was the view of the, view of the council is this, um. Or or view of his opinions, I thought she was just, I thought she was stating her opinion on how she may have disagreed with the opinions. That makes sense.
Alright, so no violation is what I'm hearing from both of you.
I'm I'm talking about by. The moderator, RTM moderator.
No, but I'm talking about her, he, the, the, in his interpretation. Uh, he thought a point of order should have been called because Counselor Bordelon was speaking on behalf of what. The moderator's opinions were which violates council's rules. But you feel that she spoke her opinion only. My problem with the whole thing was that she tried to remove the comments cuz we didn't remove comments from any other person that spoke that night. And he has every right to speak too.
I I, it wasn't, in my opinion, it wasn't what was said uh, by Council Borderline, it was the. Uh, lack of decorum that follow. And it's usually. In my mind. That's the issue, we can talk about all kinds of things and not agree. But if we can do it with decorum. That I don't see an issue there, that that's, it all, it all boils down to the call.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with Counsel Pacino, I didn't think the issue there was. Her her giving the opinion of the RTM moderator, there may have been other issues, but. Uh, I thought it was her opinion, you know, very strongly that she was opposed to. Hit the the views, you know, you know, she didn't agree, but I, but I also agree with you that I. Th- those should be, you know, should be reflected in the minutes as as. He has, anyone else has the right to provide comments and it should be in the minute, so I'm in agreement.
Okay. Alright, so. Going back over this again, so one sixteen, no discussion too far back.
Yeah.
Discussion of what five, seven, twenty four. There was a decorum issue.
Yes.
And are we all in agreement that we're just gonna make a statement that yes, there was a violation of decorum and to move forward from then on?
I am, I'm in agreement with that.
Yeah, so this, yeah, I I agree unless this council wants to do something different with future new business, but I'm comfortable with that.
Okay. Okay, so we'll declare.
The issue on the top of page says, review and discuss.
Review and discuss, that's, and I'm just waiting. Okay, and five twenty eight twenty four, there were decorum. Issues. After the dessert, after the discussion, correct? Is that what you got?
I'm not a hundred percent sure, they were after, they may have been during and after.
There were, but I don't know. That's, that wasn't part of the. Agenda, right? I mean, that wasn't, wasn't the referral.
No, he just, alright, so I am just gonna leave that one open, so so far right now. One, we're not discuss, didn't discuss. Second one, we. Found that there is a decorum issue, was a decorum issue and. Number three. Had decorum issues but does not pertain to what he wrote in for his referral, correct?
Yes, the the, yeah, five twenty eight twenty four is just basically, it it should have been. Uh, called, um. A a to, a point of order at the time and it and that did not happen, so, um.
Think we can do it.
He's just bringing it to our attention. That's how, that's how I see it.
Alright, so now we're gonna go on to. So my page, we are gonna go on to twenty twenty four, six, six, seven. Alright. Uh, so Counsel Guyaski made a referral to the Rules Committee to consider additions to Rule eight D. Does everybody have their rules in front of them?
Yeah, man, yes.
Okay, Rule eight D, which is on page five, um. He wants us to review and discuss, I said, he goes the following additions to the rule. Eight D decorum and. And debate limits of debate were proposed, if the mayor finds a counselor out of. Order, the council will immediately suspend their remarks. The mayor will re-recognize them to give them the opportunity to come back into order. If they fail to do so, the counselor out of order yields their turn and remaining time. Second part of that is counsel shall remain silent and no side comments when they do not have the floor. Your thoughts?
Does side comments. Include. Um, one counsel leaning over to another and 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 asking a question like, what what was that person's name? I mean, it's not a side comment to the whole thing, but it's. What what did I miss? Not just asking questions, is is that a side comment that doesn't necessarily disturb the meeting?
I would think so.
Okay, I I was gonna say the same thing, but I know there's times when I've walked in and had to ask a question of my fellow counselor. That's next to me to say, what was the person's name, um, what did I miss, so. And we can't.
You know, I I'll. I'll back off from that, cuz you're right, and if if I was to lean over to my fellow counselor, ask a question and and the mayor said. Counsel Pacino, you're out of order, um, Counsel Pacino would shut up. And then, it's what it is, you're right, I was out of order, done, we'll move, let's move on, thank you, ma'am, Madam Mayor. So, yeah, okay, I'll. Any side comments? Even even if you're just asking a silly little question of of your neighbor.
Alright, what are your thoughts on the first bullet item if the mayor finds a. Order, which is actually under points of order, which is under subsection on page four of B. Which would be a addendum to number one?
I'm, I like the statement, I just don't know necessarily off the top of my head. Where to plug it in, where it makes best most sense.
Look at page four.
I'm looking at page four.
Section B.
Section B.
Points of order. Number one.
Okay.
Your thoughts, Counsel McBride?
I I think I'm all in favor of this going to the council to have the council deem if this is appropriate, I myself. Individually, I'm not in favor of this, I think it. Uh, provides. Too much power and too much authority to the mayor, and that's nothing against our current mayor, I'm just saying in general, it's. I think she's been very effective at her. Uh, the recesses, and what I would like to see is. If situations arise like they have in the past, in this situation, I would prefer. The mayor to continue to just recess, because I think it's. I think it's a little. Overkill to. Have make that determination. To 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 take their remaining time. But again, I'm 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 not saying it shouldn't go to the. Full council for review, I just think it's a little little too strict and. In my view, I like how she's been effective at. Just shutting it down with recess.
Alright, my two cents. As I'm looking at rules of order. The mayor or the presiding officer has the right to preserve order and decorum at all meetings and to decide on questions of order. As the chairperson. We're supposed to maintain. Order at all meetings and we do not, and to continuously to have recesses. Is a problem, we are not conducting the town's business because we have to recess. And we come back and then we have to recess again, one night we did between three and four. When we only had three items, three to four items on agenda item that could have been done in an hour and a half. I have a problem with time management of our meetings. If we continually do recesses. We'd never get the town business done. This is authorizing the mayor to say, stop what you're doing and we need to continue the business at hand. I've never been to a meeting where we had to keep doing this. And I'm on many different organizations. There's no reason for this to keep happening. It's disrespectful to. Fellow counselors, it's disrespectful to the town employees, and it's disrespectful to all of. The town of Groton, cuz we cannot get our work done.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree with you, I'm not a, not a fan of. How we're doing these either, but I just don't know if this is gonna yield the results that we're hoping for, but in any event, I'm. I'm okay with moving it to the council for further discussion or review.
I'm in, I'm definitely in agreement with the. Um, Council McBride, but I I think I'm a little bit more in agreement with you, uh. Madam Chair, I I think that. This is a, I I like this line. I think it will work, but I think it should be. More of. A second tier escalation. Not right off the bat. I mean, if we've, if we've gone to a recess. And. Uh, decorum continues to be an issue. Then. I'm gonna hit this, you can hit this line. I I don't think this should be. A a first go.
So what verbiage do you want? Do we say? After. The third time or second time that a point of order has been called?
Yeah, I mean, I I'd say after the first recess. Cuz we will have gone, had some decorum issues, I I would imagine, uh, and then it'd be a recess. So after the first recess, if this continues, then we fall into this. This category, so. After the first recess, if the mayor. Finds a counselor out of order. And and that then that stands. I think it would stand on its own at that point.
So a counselor for the second time, cuz the first time would have caused the recess, you're saying?
Yes, first time would have caused, caused the recess. Um, and and I I don't think we need to worry, let's say for. For instance, say, you know, counselor X, um, is is the cause of the first recess. And counselor Y is the cause of the second. I believe that the mayor. Will be able to determine. Whether or not to use this statement. Upon a second recess if there if there needs to be one. Does that sound? Like it makes sense?
Now, that's a good suggestion, I I think, I like that little little flexibility.
After the first.
Yes, after the first recess.
If the mayor finds.
Decorum recess.
After the first.
Cuz that's what happened, we're having decorum recesses. In most cases, we have recess every so often, it has nothing to do with the call, so I I want that to be included into this.
Okay, we're okay with that line adding that, but alright, this. The counselors, okay, we did not. Well, we went out of order, but I'm gonna go back to the second line. So are we good, also should remain silent and make no side comments when they do not have the floor?
Is that not in here already?
Well, technically under section D on page five. No counselor should speak unless recognized by the mayor. It's already there, it's on page five, section D, number one.
We could adjust that and say no counselor shall speak or have side comments unless recognized by the mayor. Um, but. I don't think it's a hundred percent necessary.
Your thoughts, Council McBride?
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm for, we shouldn't be discussing things amongst ourselves at all, so I kinda like it. Uh, but I like Counsel Pacino's. You know, recommendation, I think, just to add the. No counselor shall speak. I forgot what you said, or or no side comments into that, number one, cuz it's in effect, it's the same thing.
Speak? Or take. Any side comments, I'm gonna say any side comments, I'm gonna change it a little bit. If you guys are okay with that.
Okay. Read it to us, how you, how you wanna do it.
Wait a minute, that's not gonna work. It's cuz the line says no counselor shall speak unless recognized by the mayor. This will include no side comments.
When they do not have the floor.
And, okay, I just said that, and and this will include. No side. Comments. Unless. They. Does that work?
I I think you could actually leave out the word no. It's redundant in this case.
And this.
Include side comments. It might actually be a double negative, I'm not sure.
And this will include side comments, okay. Got it. So, are we good to make a motion to move this forward? As.
As we've just, as we've just amended it?
As we've just amended both of these, yes.
Yes, yes, I think so.
Okay, so. The first one is going under page. Four. Section B. Roman number one, and it's gonna be A.
Yes.
That work? B, one, A.
And it'll, it'll say. And the only, the real thing we're changing that, it'll say after the first.
The core recess.
Core recess.
Yes.
Yeah, I think, I think that works.
And number. Page five, section D. Number one is going to now say, no counselor shall speak unless recognized by the mayor. And this will include side comments unless they have the floor.
Absolutely, that works.
Okay.
Definitely worded different, but it works.
Okay, motion to accept. As stated. Just stated, I should say.
Are you making a motion or you're asking one of us to?
I'm asking one of y'all.
Go ahead, Dave, I'll second it.
Um, McBride will make, make that motion.
And I will second it.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Okay. Alright, we're on.
And obviously, this has to go to the pa- council anyway, so.
Yes, it'll go council in the very first meeting, which would be August.
August when?
Six, you won't be here, I believe.
I will not.
Okay, alright.
I will think of you while I'm in Disney, though.
No comment.
I won't, no, I won't.
Okay. Number three. We're gonna work on number three. And that is twenty twenty four, six, six, eight. Additions to rule number fourteen, which is the conduct by town counselors. And there's three items. That. They want added, so let me go to my rules. On page ten. Cuz our current one says no counsel may speak or give the impression that he or she speaks on behalf of the council without prior council authorization to do so. Okay. So Council Guyaski has asked. At look at three items. Counselors should conduct themselves in professional manner when they are acting in their office. Makes sense. Number two is counsel should follow all aspects of the town ethics ordinance. And number three, councils will respect all rules of the town council. Does anyone have a problem with these?
No, well, it's a no brainer.
Yeah, I don't necessarily have a problem, I just think it's. It's. Kinda one of those, it's it's a given, I mean, I don't know. I'm I'm all, you know, if you guys wanna put it in, that's fine, but it seems like it's just common sense that. We we do this anyway, but here nor there.
So I'm actually for all of it because. I understand your concern, Council McBride, I agree, but there are times that. We, sometimes we have to be clear. Unfortunately.
So sometimes the unwritten rules.
Are not. Correct. So, do I have a motion? I'll make the motion to add, uh. Add this to Rule fourteen. Can I get a second?
I second that motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Alrighty then. We are now on to the next item, which is. Twenty twenty four. Oh, we gotta add a new rule. Okay. Twenty twenty four, six, six. That was eight, six, six, nine. This is disciplining disciplinary measures.
We don't have anything of that, of this sort. In the rules as we. As they currently stand, do we?
Well, it does say. I think there was a hint at it when we were doing this.
Okay.
Couple years ago, but.
Which rule do you think that might be close to?
Probably decorum.
Okay.
I thought we put in something about we would follow Robert's rule. But maybe we didn't put it in. I'm looking, sorry guys.
That you follow Robert's rules in the book, so unless you state otherwise. That's what would prevail is Robert's rules, it's already generally in there.
That's what I thought we said, we already said we would follow it.
Yeah, it's in there under eight, I think.
That's what I, didn't I say eight, yes, uh, yeah, decorum.
Oh, yeah, D, eight D.
And A is where Robert's rules is referenced.
Yes, shall govern the council in all cases which they are applicable, provide not conflict with the. With these rules, the town charter, applicable ordinances or statutes, which is parliamentary authority. But.
Are there any disciplinary rules in Robert's rules?
Yes.
Whole chapter.
No, we're not joking. So I don't know if you guys have your big book, but it's like section this. Oh, see, I got the big one. Council McBride, do you have the big one?
I do, chapter, chapter twenty disciplinary procedures.
Probably same chapter.
Chapter twenty, which would be. Wait a minute, what page are you on?
I'm I'm on this book, I don't know, is this the book you're on?
Yes.
Page six oh eight?
Thank you. Oh, you're in the background, okay, so that makes sense. Oh, I did have it tab, oh.
I gue- I guess my overriding comment on this is really focused on censure. And. I, my understanding, and I have a limited review, I'm sure Chair Parker, you have much more knowledge. But if we were to move down a censure path. That would. Being of itself, it would follow Robert's rules and it would be. Um, you know, there'd be a process, it'd be an investigation, it'd be a hearing and so forth, so. It seems to me like. It would be, it would become its own. Item, like, we wouldn't necessarily have it in our, in our. In our rules, that makes sense.
Not necessarily, but again, like we said on the last one, we didn't think we would have to put it in. I think we have to be very specific. On what we're thinking of and have it written in front of everyone, so that. When they have their rules, they can pull it out and say, oh, that's what you meant. Till nobody, there's. Cuz not everybody brings their book with them, I know I do, I bring. Like three dou- three, three different ones. But. If we're not clear and we come up with using the censure from. Sex, the twelfth edition. They're not gonna know.
No, I I I understand exactly what you're saying, my, my question is to just throw in here number two, censure of a counselor. I don't, I don't think that's. Proper in that you could just censure a counselor, I think censure a counselor involves a lot more. Of a review and a hearing and investigation that. That would have to take place before. Censoring a counselor could occur, I mean, that's based on my limited knowledge. You know, I mean, there's a review process and all that that goes into. Into censuring, uh. Uh, uh, an individual and organization. Well, I know, I I on that, I need, I need more time, and I did my homework as best I could for this one, but that seems to me like it's. Uh, going down a path that I'm not necessarily opposed to, I just feel like there's a. There's an avenue that would 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 come about before. The mayor or the council could censure. Uh, counselor, I think there's a process that would need to be followed. Uh, a detailed process. Before that could occur, but that's just my opinion, you know, it could be way off base.
And. Actually. I would make censure the last route. Instead of number two. I would do. Public apology. And this is at. After the first meeting, the first meeting of public apology, second one, it continues. To remove them from committee assignments, except for the committee of the whole. Three would be striking from the record, council's out of order comments. But we all have to be in agreement, this is only after, this is gonna move up. Every time we do something that is gonna move up, you have to.
So you make the four of these as escalating. Uh, disciplinary measures?
Yep.
Okay. I think whatever we come up with here and whatever order we put these things in here. It probably should go. To the legal department before it even goes to. The town council. No sense in having, having, you know, the whole, the whole council voting on something that might not. Hold water. Make sure it holds water before we get silly with it.
Mister Bert, would that be possible?
Yeah, sure. Certainly have them look over wherever you want.
If they can't do it by by the sixth, then. There's always another month.
Well, yes.
For this particular. You know.
So my thing is the first penalty, and this is for the first meeting, would be an apology.
The first meeting after the.
After the if once their members called out of order, if the members teams be out of order and you know how we end up with a recess.
Okay.
And we recess up to a third time. The third time they need to make apology.
Okay. Does it say that in here the third time?
I'm going to say the third time.
Okay, within the same meeting.
Within the same meeting.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, that sounds fine. Is it at that point, it's excessive, I would imagine.
So, cause that means. All right, the other question is, do we want the mayor? After the third recess, we can, somebody can ask for a penalty and not the mayor.
Yes, some, well, sometime between the 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 that particular meeting and the next one. So uh uh we could probably do it um in between meetings. Ask for it and then it'd be so a subject for the for the very next meeting.
So if the person doesn't do it, then then we have to make a motion to add to the next agenda.
Yeah.
Does that make sense, Council McBride?
Yeah, I think I understand.
Yeah, I I I I don't, you know, cause some people will think about it later and going, you know. I really didn't like that. I I really would like to do something about that. And just because the meeting's over, it shouldn't be over. Cause if it was, we wouldn't be talking, we wouldn't be sitting here right now talking about any of this.
So my, let me grab my pen again. So after. The third recess. Any member. Can. Request. A public that apology. I'm just gonna use number one line.
Okay. Are you, are you containing with the support of the majority of the council?
Yes.
Yes, it's a motion. Um it's got after the third race, I remember can't make them. Make a motion to request, make, I'm gonna switch that, make a motion. To request. A public apology. And the rest of our verbiage um with. A majority. Right?
It's a majority rule. That's two third. Two thirds would be fine. I think.
Just a question, Chair Parker. Um, the way that way this is written now is. It's to make a request to the rules committee, but are we saying that that's gonna be removed? It's just gonna be the council approving it?
It could be, well, how about this? Oh, he did say that.
Cause I think it's reading that the rules committee is gonna make the determination as to whether or not what action should be taken. Boy, this is.
Well, if we determine as the rules trending now, what actions are to be taken, taken after. What actions were to happen. We don't need to cut, doesn't need to come back to us all the time. We already have a a um.
It would be a clear cut if we just write it into there and then we can all decide right then and if. If it happens. You're right. How are we gonna do that? Cause we're not gonna meet each time of violations done.
No. But if we make the determination here and now that after the third uh um. Recess that. Any one of these things could happen or 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 all, one or all um and with a two thirds vote.
We want two thirds vote, so that means six of us have to.
Two thirds present, right? Is that how that works? Two thirds present?
So if we have seven, that would be four or five, John. Five?
Second. How many present? Seven?
Seven.
Be five.
Five.
And and a quorum is five, so that would uh uh that two thirds would be three.
Not majority, you want two thirds.
Yeah, I I think two thirds is is fair.
And we're not focusing on the removal of committee assignments because that would be the mayor, so we're just focusing on the public apology. Is that correct?
No, we're gonna go down each line.
Okay.
So um, so you want two thirds vote with a majority. Third.
And that's to ask for the public apology. And then the plot doesn't necessarily reset. So if something else happens again. The next time somebody asks um uh for this rule to be enacted. It would go to the next uh uh item on the escalating scale.
Well, then I would say the next item. Would be the striking from the record, the council's out of order comments. Cause.
And that again for the two thirds. We stick with that the whole way through. And then. Down the line, if it happens a third time, whatever the third thing is, again, with the two thirds, two thirds vote.
Well, you're, oh, I see where Council McBride's going with the committee assignments. We should make that the ultimate decision for committee assignments would be the mayor. So is that number three censors would be last unless we say. Censure would be according to Robert's rules as previously stated in our thing, but how would we do that? The censure.
I mean, you could say the motion, the two thirds vote pertains to the public apology and the strikement of the record, period. And then additionally, the mayor. Also has the ability to determine if the individual should be removed from pretty assignments. So it's two kind of two pronged approach.
Well, if if we i- i- I see, I see what you're saying, but if we. Uh I I see what you're saying, that is, it's the mayor's determination whether somebody uh can be. Uh removed from their committee assignments, but if we were to have a two thirds vote. Uh in in that way, the mayor knows two thirds want this to happen. And it's, it's not the the whole removal of assignments is not laid at her feet or whomever the mayor is.
True, so, cause we don't want it to look like the mayor.
It's not, it's not, it's not about, uh, yeah, I don't want it to be all about uh uh whomever the mayor is and and so it's. It, this is, we're a council.
This is where it ends up being the and there the disciplinary is coming from all of us as a whole.
Yes.
The putting it on the mayor, cause if the mayor's been trying to get. Order, this is where we all need to step in and say, this is what we want and X Y gotta happen in order for.
And and the may even at that point can say, uh, I hear what you're saying. I'm not gonna do that.
Right.
Fine, we uh this is just us saying, this, this is what we would like to go to this next step. Now go to that next step.
Yeah, two different bullet points. The the council has the ability to do this and then the mayor also has the ability to do this.
With a two thirds vote.
Yeah, well, I think the mayor could do whatever, wha- whatever uh the mayor wants to do. I I just, I just don't feel right. Laying any disciplinary action on one person. I think i- I think we are. Uh a a nine person council and things should be decided um with a nine person vote.
Yes, cause the mayor, and again, the mayor there to be the chair of our meetings. So the mayor is equal to us, even though they have the title of mayor, our chart, same thing. So I. I think I would like it to be. That we all make the decision for the removal of the committee assignment, so it's not put on one person.
But can't the mayor make that change anytime they desire anyway? Or no?
I don't.
Please don't.
Um, John, I don't remember that. Uh Mister Burt, I don't remember that happening.
Counselors, yes, she uh she could with counselors.
So she can change it even.
For those ones that are appointed by her.
Appointed, so if they're not appointed.
So like she appoints to things like the rules committee, the personnel committee, any of those she could pull back and change.
And what about the ones that people volunteer for and they're assigned it, cause they're now appointed, they're assigned, right? For like scare.
If it that, you know, if it's an official appointment by the council, it's gotta go by the charter rules. Which includes a public, she includes basically notice of why you're taking them out of public hearing and all that, in a public vote.
That's what I thought.
Would this committee assignments include the ABCs?
There are a couple of them. You know, we have a couple committees that are just traded by the town council in the last few years that are appointed by the mayor. She could pull, she could pull those back, cause they're not appointed by the council. There's only, there's not many of those, though.
So removal from a committee assignments. Or ABC assignments?
For those appointed by the mayor.
Yeah, that's seems fair. I mean, if we as as a council uh have a two thirds vote to enact this removal. Then that still leaves the mayor with a whole lot of leverage as far as which committees. All the committees, some of the committees, one committee, no committees. Um, leaves, leaves the mayor a a a lot of leeway uh to do as he as she fit, he's fit with that particular thing, although. Whole council or the rest of the council did approve for doing this or him, him doing this with a two thirds vote. I was just clearing my throat, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Maybe if it's a general statement, the uh the council and the mayor. Upon further review can make other changes to committee assignments as applicable. I mean, just.
Oh, my gosh, can you type that in the thing to chat so I can write it?
Not a good typo, but I'll send you, I'll send you.
The council.
The the council or the mayor.
And or the mayor or.
And or the mayor. Upon further review can make other. Can make other changes as necessary to committee assignments as applicable.
And now all you gotta do is re-watch this video.
Again, though, almost.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, I interrupted you.
No, go ahead.
I was gonna say, again, if it's appointed by the council, you're bound by charter and so you're, you're, you're gonna have to do the public hearing and all that stuff. Uh you know. And with the way it's written or sounded like they might council might build, just make the change themselves.
Or maybe add in there your comments, John, about, you know, that's what I meant by as applicable, but add in. Based upon the rules of the committees or, you know, however we word it that. Or the mayor.
And or per the charter.
For the charter and the rules and regulations involving all the various committees, you know, make it. Wide, wide, wide ranging, so we can, we need to follow as John's saying, whatever, whatever rules apply to particular committees.
Does that, John, Mr. Burt?
Good to me.
All right, yes, I'm gonna have to retype all this up and have to get this done. All right. All right, number. Well, we did that one. So last but not least, is censure.
Now, what exactly does that entail?
Well, there's a lot in here. It depends on how you do it, cause I know there's a section.
Due to time constraints and Council Pacino's recommendation that legal review it, maybe this is something that. Legal could review, because I think this is a, this is a pretty big, pretty big undertaking, right, in my opinion.
Yeah, I I think that, you know, between the three of us, you you know what we'd like to have done, but none of us are lawyers. You know, let's just make sure that uh, you know. What we're asking is is right. I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I do not wanna bring this in front of the council, most lawyers uh have blood on it.
So. A motion, we can ask, motion to censure, we could. Ask the person to apologize all and also leave the meeting.
Okay.
Cause I don't think it says. I have this one. I have notes to myself, but now would I just put my notes out? Oh, yeah. So, Council McBride, I was looking at uh ten fifty. Six and fifty seven, which is on page one fifteen. Cause a motion to s- a mo- motion to censure is a main motion and is debatable. But then I also have section twelve twenty. Which is about improper amendments, but that won't work either.
Yeah, I mean, I'll be honest, I think I I at least need more time and understanding of. Uh the procedures around censor censorship to to be covered with this. I don't, I think it's a bigger task than. At least what I understand it to be.
Well, if I remember correctly, you only do, what you're doing is trying to call the member in some order, but they don't come into order. We can remove the person, which is sixty one nineteen, which is on six twelve. This is where a sergeant in arms would come into play and we don't have a sergeant in arms.
I honestly, I don't think we need that.
And uh I don't think so either, but.
I mean, if if we ever, if we cr- ever got to that point. Just recess. And and if it doesn't get solved after the recess, we adjourn and and the meeting will finish uh something later. There's no reason um to have a sergeant in arms. That's, that's too much, I think.
All right, so. The censure of a counselor, we want that to be reviewed by the attorneys on how we can broach it.
Yes, and we'll meet again to further.
Yeah, I I I would definitely say in 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 whatever, the order that you we just did. Um, I would. I would, I would vote yes on that, on that order, but like I said, again, before it gets to the council. At least for this rule fifteen edition. Um, it would have.
We we always come back, we can leave that off for now, the censure, cause I do like the other three we came up with.
I think the lawyer should look at those too, make sure what what's not gonna hurt anything. They gotta read the whole thing anyway.
All right, so we're not doing it. Okay, so. That was six six nine, so I'm gonna type something up. What day are you leaving?
I'm leaving at uh uh o dark thirty on Friday.
Okay, you're not available. All right, so if I type all these up. Well, it doesn't matter. I'll type it all up and we can get it to the attorneys if Mister Burt's okay with that.
Yeah.
Good to me. In fact, uh, you know, they had reviewed the final one in here. But they said they'd be glad if, you know, to review anything else you came out of committee with.
Okay, that would be good, cause then we'll just have to re-meet again, so. Alright, we have what we need for this, um, so the motion would be. What I'm typing up, so we're gonna postpone this vote on this agenda item, correct?
No, I, I thought, I think we could vote on it, it just has to. Get the lawyers before it hits the council.
Yeah, I think we vote on what we're, we're discussing when, at the censorship, we're looking for more information, more review.
Alright, so one, alright, so section one, which would be after the third recess. Any member can make a motion for a public apology. With two thirds vote. Public, I forgot the word, a public apology of the council violating the rules with a two thirds vote. Okay. We're gonna take each line, is that, I'm gonna make the motions for that, and can I get a second?
I'm second to that.
And all favor.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, for the next item, which we're gonna move, striking from the record, the counselors out of order comments.
I think that two should be after a third recess, it should be worded the exact same way. It's just the, 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 um, disciplinary measure should be. At the only ex- escalating, um, item.
Okay. Yeah, Council McBride, are you good with that?
Yes.
Alright, so I'll make the motion, can I get a second?
Second, Pacino.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright. So, the next one. The council and or the mayor upon further review, did I get that right?
Yes.
Can make. What was it?
Can make changes to committee assignments.
May make, can make changes, why did? To committee assignments, um.
While following and adhering to all the rules and regulations which guide each committee.
And, and, and that still, again, should follow the third recess in any particular meeting. And that would be the next escalation.
All the. All the rules and the charter, cause some of this is gonna have to follow the charter.
Yep, that makes sense.
And the charter. Actually, I'm just gonna put it all under thing and say after the third recess. The following will happen, or can happen. One would be any member, two would be striking, and three would be the removal of committees. That way each of them have it and just break it down underneath.
And then four would be censure.
And four would be censure, which. We want the actual verbiage on that one, cause is that gonna be after a third recess, or is it after a third meeting? And the continuation of the same thing.
I, I, I think after a third recess in any particular meeting. Cause that definitely shows escalation, and I don't necessarily want the escalation to be, um, a small thing. It, it needs to be a big thing, um, yeah, because it, I don't want it to seem. Like we're just shooting from the hip. And I don't wanna do that, it would, it should, it should take a long way. To get censured.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm comfortable with the first three, I'm not comfortable with approving censorship without more information, so just for the.
So number four, censure, and wait, this one will be a post, um. Further discussion.
I, I'm okay with, with approving center at this time, but I obviously, um. I'm definitely okay with being overruled by the lawyers and overruled by the council and, and, uh, as a whole. It's, you know, it, it, this is just our recommendation. This isn't definitely what's going to happen, there's, there's two other steps here, um, that this would have to go through, uh, to make sure. Uh, it's right. Frankly, I'm just a carpenter, that's, this is what I do, I'm a carpenter, not a lawyer. I, I, I know what, uh, it feels right, and this is what I think feels right, uh, for, um, the rules here. And, uh, that's what the lawyers are for, to make sure my feelings are actually right. Or wrong.
So Chair, you had, you had the first two motions approved.
Yes. Do we add to the third one, I'm sorry?
We did, we started, I'll, I'll make that motion for the third one.
Okay. I'll second, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, alright, so the fourth one is the one we're gonna leave open. Is that what you want, Council McBride?
That, that's what I want, but I think Council Pacino was maybe leaning towards.
I, I think we should, we should push it forward, uh, as, as one. As the whole, uh, rule, the whole additional rule, push it forward as one thing, and, um. That's just our recommendation, I mean, I understand you don't wanna make a, a recommendation without further information. But that's where it's gonna go, it's gonna go for the further information, and then we're gonna get a second whack at it at the town council meeting.
Right, so how about this? My thoughts for motion to censure would be still a apology. And if the person is still out of order, that they leave the meeting.
Yeah, I have, I have concerns with that too, I think legal should review that as well.
Uh, I believe that's in Robert's rules and we can do that, I know it's in Robert's rules, I just read it. It's in censure, it's under the section you gave us.
Okay.
But just a suggestion, and. Well, definitely need apology, so the item would be what other. Things can be used for censure, is that what the question is? What's the highest penalty, what's the next penalty?
Is that for me, Chair Parker?
It's for both of you.
I mean, my, my, my thought is, we move this forward as is with these three motions. And, and my thought was, we, we'd meet again and gather additional information on, on further action that may be needed to be taken, whether it's. Removal meeting or censorship, but I don't, I don't feel comfortable, uh, without. At least my, my additional review in order to move that forward, cause I think there's other things that come into play with both of those, but I could be wrong, I'm just giving you, giving you my opinion.
House and Council, you know, we wanted to go ahead and move it forward.
You know, I, I, I can, I can see what, uh, Council McBride is, is saying, and. And I can, I can, I can agree with that, I can move forward with that.
I can, that's what I was just.
We're not, we're not gonna. Throw in the waste bin.
No, that'd be an item to be discussed further, so.
I don't need to be, I don't need to be a holdout on this, it's, we, we have so far, the three works, I think.
Okay, so I'm gonna make it, oh, wait a minute, you're not back. Until, when are you back?
Uh, on the twenty first.
Nice vacation, good for you.
Phone this topic until just this item, the censorship. Can we postpone it until, can you guys do August twenty sixth?
I might be able to do somewhere during my vacation, just talk to me about it, and, and, uh, we'll, we'll see what we can do, if, um. You know, my, my wife has a plan. When we're gonna be in the park, what we're gonna be doing dinner, she's got the whole thing planned out, uh, if, uh, and I'll let you know where there's an opening. I probably do it on, uh, during, while I'm gone.
Too, anyway, so Council McBride, are you good with postponing that, that talk?
Yes, and I'm available the twenty sixth if needed as well.
Alright, so, and he says he may be available earlier, so what I'm gonna say. A motion to postpone, I do not have a definite time to, to, a time. Convenient for all counselors in the month of August, can I do that, John?
Yes.
Okay, motion to postpone.
I'll second that, McBride.
Motion to postpone the topic. Until. All counselors. I'll go back and review, I say, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that one's postponed until we all can meet again. Alright, then last.
Are we, uh, we're not postponing the whole, are we postponing the whole?
No, 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 it's just the, the censure topic.
Okay, good.
Cause I think we're gonna move. I'll ask this at the end, um, let's go to the topic number twenty twenty four, seven oh five. Alright. Oh, this is discussing executive session.
Yes.
Okay. Let's discuss this one, this.
I have brought this one up, um. With, with other counselors, I, I believe that, uh, I, I didn't. I, I, well, I know I didn't try to get it onto the agenda myself, um, but I, this here was. Was something that, uh, uh, Mayor Franco, uh, put on. And I wholeheartedly agree with it. Without changing a word.
And, and this has been reviewed by the attorneys. In fact, they, they thought that. You know, to uphold the need for executive sessions, the reason for them, it's good to have some rules in place.
My only change on this would be, do we wanna make it? D one and, and include all three of these bullet, all five of these bullet points, or do we wanna do D one, two, three? Four and five, and have five bullet points. That is, actually, no, we actually do six, because of the original.
Yeah, no, good rules, executive sessions. So, this would be under subsection D, one, two, three, four. So it, it's under rule two, under D, which would be its own subsections. So it will be fi- all five. And since the attorneys have reviewed this one, I'm okay with it.
I'm okay with move, I'm okay with moving this forward to the council, I, I individually am not okay with a couple of these. Uh, but I'm, I'm okay with bringing it to the council, I can discuss my, for lack of time constraints, I'll discuss some of my concerns at council, but I. Um, I, I particularly have concerns over portable electronics, I mean, I have. A, a wife and five kids and businesses, and I get texts and, uh, you know, what happens, you have an emergency, I mean, I, I have concerns with that, cause I don't. You know, what happens if your, your, your house loses power and your wife's trying to get in touch with you, we're locked in executive session for an hour with no way to get in touch with it, I'm not, not a fan of that one, um.
I, and I understand, but I, I have the same problem, but the thing is, I think it's more of, we leave it. Where the dices and. If we have to, if there's a urgency. I don't know if we should turn it all the way off. And, you're right, cause we never know what the emergency is, then again. Who, and this is only for the counselors, correct?
I would think of the.
Yeah, it's council rules, I mean, it's council rules, so yes.
Also, it's not, doesn't pertain to Mr. Bert.
Well. Well, and I've run like, you know, sometimes that. Or looking up things, um, I mean, it's up to you, I mean, it can be. We could say nobody going.
Well, it's the concern of, like, Mr. Council McBride said, that it could be a family emergency, how are they gonna get ahold of us if. Way off.
Maybe, maybe, uh, maybe having them visible, if you have any electronics. You know, you're already gonna sit together, that if you had them just visible, you know, where they're, you know, obviously not typing on them or anything.
I, I think that, um, if, if. If Mr. Bert is gonna have his, um, you know, town supply phone, that's not a personal device. It's his work device, um. And, you know, I could, and I don't know, it's up to Mr. Bert if he wants to do this, I would be glad to give that number to my wife. Say, if, if it's an emergency, call this number, I'm in this meeting. And so's Mr. Bert, conveniently.
That's, are, are you okay with that, Council McBride, if there's a number that could be provided?
Yeah, that's, that's a possibility, I didn't think about it, but, yeah, that's, that's my concern is the emergency situation.
And, and I get that, and, and, and that's valid, cause I know, uh, um, Chair Parker, um. Is concerned with that, um, I'm not so concerned with that, but, um, but, yeah, if, if Mr. Bert answers the phones. Juliet, you gotta go, go get your phone, done.
And as long as you're okay with that, Mr. Bert, I'm.
That's fine to me.
This is, this is probably why other municipalities have, you know, counselors have their own, their own work phones. Their own work iPads, because. You can track anything an employee or counselor is doing, but if they have their own work phone, you know what I mean, it's not.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Not, not necessarily, we don't get details on any calls made, and the, and you, there's no program to keep texts. You know, to re, to store them, so you're kind of on your honor, so basically, so, so different really than, than having a personal. You know, if you get a FOIA on a personal and you did work business, it's still FOIable, there's really no difference in them.
Oh, because our work phones, we know, we can log in and see every single text people are. Not, not in London, my personal work, you can see texts, you can see voicemail, you can see everything.
How would you know if somebody deleted the voice, that some texts?
Hmm, that's true, good point. Okay, so moving on, and, and we'll, we'll move on, sorry.
So, besides that first item that we potentially have a workaround, um, are you guys okay with the rest of the items?
Absolutely.
Cause if the attorneys have reviewed this, then I'm, I'm good with it.
Exactly.
My last question, and maybe, I guess legal's reviewed it, so it's probably already been addressed, but it seems strange that. That last bullet point, an action can lead to a future inability. That, that seems a s- stretched, in my opinion, it's like somebody acting today. They're gonna be held accountable for something in the future, seems like a.
Well, the, the ra- the reason is, let's say you, we had a legal review, and it was leaked and caused us legal issues. They should lose the future access to the executive sessions. You know, it's to, they'll uphold the sanctity of them, there has to be, you know, that could put us in serious legal jeopardy if somebody did that. There's gotta be a serious consequence for that.
Okay, no, that makes sense, and I guess, I'm just confused, because of my understanding, lack of understanding, I guess, is. The executive session, there's really no, unless, unless you know more than I do, John. There's really no teeth for people violating executive sessions, there's, there's liability issues, right, for the town, or, you know, whatever it may be, but there's no.
Only through their rules, other pla- yeah, it's through these rules, that's how you get the teeth.
Yeah.
There's no, i- if I went to an executive session, and I went out of line and I said something to my neighbor. It's not like they're gonna come down and, and sue me, I mean, there's no, there's no teeth, I'm not going to jail, you know, there's no.
Well, remember the, remember the newest finding of the FOIA commission, if something said it blows the whole chain of.
Right, no, I, no, I understand that, I'm just saying, I guess individually, personally, there's no real. right no I know I understand that I'm just saying I guess individually personally there's no real
we don't need to be putting the town in bad situation either can't do that I mean I I personally if I was a a town employee I wouldn't want and I maybe had issues there that was at an executive session I wouldn't want that be out in the public I would be less than happy
uh and I agree and it's the integrity of and it's our integrity this is we just have to make sure we're not doing anything wrong or perceived to be doing anything wrong especially coming out of executive session
yes I guess the first bullet point is what they're really concerned we can solve that issue I guess that's the main
alright so I'll make a motion to accept
what is you folks have been done a whole lot more executive sessions than I have including Mister Mister Burt what's the longest one you've ever been in
it's a couple hours that's that's pretty you know I'd say an hour is pretty typical it seems like if I had guessed an average
but that we have been in one that was like two
I feel like I feel like we don't typically go under an hour though seems always like I think people start like okay you know now it's good we beat it to death
well considering you're gonna get back to the meeting and actually finish the meeting too so
so I'm going to make a motion to accept all the additional additions to rule two for meetings under section D as a subsection I get a second
and just for comments Chair Parker we we're gonna try to resolve that first bullet point somehow or is it gonna stay as is but we can talk about it council I guess
we'll talk to the council cause I I don't wanna put in that we're gonna use Mister Burt as the point of contact we can just say that we will have one person that is be going to be able to be contacted I just don't wanna announce that to everybody while we just did though in this meeting
it doesn't have to be Mister Burt either it could just be an emergency number there will be one provided for the nine counselors and to get to their families and the whoever else is at the meeting
I I guess my question is how can we get it in the in this meeting
alright in order to an emergency number will be provided uh uh no a number a phone number will be provided
to address emergency situations
to address emergency situations I can withdraw my motion to add that to the thing I can see that
I'll I'll withdraw my second
no I'll second that revised motion
alright all in favor alright did we finish it all we finished it off all except for one so and I do not need to go over these ag- agenda items again do I the only one that we will be following up with is the censure at a time to be determined in August when all counts all the committee members available
and that's only part of one of the one of the agenda items
yes the rest we will are we moving this forward for August six besides the censure which we can come back and open back up cause we're leaving that open are we good with that alright so the rest of the agenda items that were for discussion this evening will be moved to August six um all with the exception of the censure topic which will be reviewed by the attorneys uh any other business
have a great weekend
alright motions I need a motion
I motion to adjourn
I'll second that
alright and we are adjourned at seven eleven okay sorry guys that this was our longest one but we had big time topics wait a minute you who made the motion Adam
listen it was one it was it was one of us it was the other one
alright are we good gentlemen
have a great evening everybody
thank you guys